Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
I just want you to answer your question.
Forty years I have one of these. It's two meetings.
I think it may be.
Call the meeting orders, the February eighth, two thousand and sixteen planning commission.
Mr. Cox?
Uh, here.
Mr. Cozart?
Here.
Mr. Chivon?
Here.
Mr. Westbrooks?
Here.
All right, first item is the proposed signage for more reasons. Eighty-two ten, I still don't count this board. Anybody here for that? If you guys wanna leave there for a minute, see if somebody comes on and come back to it.
Yeah, I suppose so.
Okay, next one, proposed signage for interior supply, ninety-four sixty-five Freeway Drive. All right, you wanna, just tell us briefly what the plan is over there?
Sure. There's, it's currently bought by this location, about Freeway Drive. Bought by the interior supply from CDS, so of course they're gonna change the signs. There's a masonry monument sign up front of the property, and there's currently the two, it's a double sided monument sign, and there's two, there's a sign on each side. The CSD sign is shown there as the current sign, existing sign. And we're proposing to change that out with a new interior supply sign. Say, six millimeter aluminum composite material with a visual graphic designation. And actually, the client is going to install themselves.
Then you know much about the, what the sign is?
Yeah, it's, uh, right now, they have, if you look there, you see the CSD sign. It's actually on the front of their gate, openly open, and you can't really see it. And so they're gonna be taking that down, and there's actually one on each side of there. They're gonna take both of those down, and they would like to change the location of the new sign, which is smaller, and place it on the chain link fence, just to the right of the entrance to their delivery area. And that is the same type of material, except it's a little thinner material. It's a three millimeter thick aluminum composite material, because it's gonna be on the fence.
Got some comments. Now, Brian, you've got, what's your next topic?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My report dated February sixth, two thousand and sixteen, regarding this sign at ninety-four fifty-six North Freeway Drive. Regarding the ground monument sign, the code permits a forty square foot ground monument sign. It's an existing structure, block structure, that effectively they're changing out the panel. So I don't think there's any concern with regard to utilizing an existing structure. The size is not changing, it meets the code. The fence mounted sign, however, it's considered an instructional sign under the Planning and Zoning Code, and that particular sign, the way the code reads, it's approved by the building commissioner or his designated, I guess, designated in this case. But the sign itself, there's no provision in the code to allow it to be on a fence. Now, I don't know the history of that sign, if it was previously approved by the planning commission in that location, if there was a variance. But there is no, there's no provisions within the code to mount that, that sign on a fence. So I put in my comments under the recommendation section that, you know, planning commission could request that this particular instructional sign be pole mounted. It could be sized differently, it could be smaller, because the way the code reads with regard to the size, it says that the, that the instructional signs shall not be larger than necessary to serve the intended instructional purpose. In this case, it's to direct, I'm assuming, deliveries into the receiving area. And so regarding the ground sign, I have no concern. I think it meets the code, but the fence mounted instructional sign, I do think the planning commission should consider the location of that sign and how to treat that particular sign on this property.
May I ask a question? When, when something isn't in the code, I think you said here that there's no provision at all in the code, but you're recommending that it be mounted somewhere else under a fence, but there's no rule saying you can't put them on a fence, is there, or is there?
I'd have to look in the code, but I think the code says in a section that if it's not specifically permitted, it's prohibited.
Okay, I didn't know.
Do you know, anybody remember anything, my, anything about that sign?
It's been there a long time.
Been there a long time, I can't, it doesn't fit in anything in the code, so.
Yeah, I can't remember that being part of their package before.
And we've done directional signs elsewhere. They're small, I mean, they're small to the ground, they're not mounted on fences. Would there be a problem with that, putting it somewhere else?
Um, it'd have to be up to my, you know, client, 'cause they're gonna be putting it up.
Putting a little pole on it?
Well, it's four by six, it's, if you look at the plot plan, I attached to the, it's the middle, you can see, you don't have the exact, the exact distance off of the, off a Freeway Drive, but it's probably a good, probably a hundred feet off. And, you know, where this is located, I guess, I guess, both my client and I didn't feel like there's gonna be that much of an issue up there off a Freeway Drive, or there's really no residential areas at all, or it just, it just needed to be a little bit bigger so it could be seen off the road.
Well, yeah, but if you're doing a directional sign, typically when you do a directional sign, it's gonna be out here closer to the road.
Yeah, I guess we just stay with the, stay within the right of way then?
Well, it'd be the same as your, the monument sign.
Right, right.
So it would be brought forward, which actually made it easier for a driver to see as they're coming down the road. I'm not real keen on it being mounted on the fence, I was real surprised when I drove by and saw the one that was there already.
Yeah.
Would be surprised that that came through planning commission.
I didn't do that.
I know that. Not finding fault, but now we have an opportunity.
That's what I was trying to get rid of those.
Yeah, we have an opportunity to correct it.
Yeah.
And my, we should, we should move to a standard directional, I think it's our pole mounting sign.
Maybe, maybe someone, maybe it's even the area that's, you know, just sort of receiving entrance, you wanted to bring trucks in that way, maybe it's still mounted on the fence, it could be supposed like your sign.
Well, sure, Martin, if it does, it does have, have a directional sign mounted up here, and sometimes there are two faces, so you could see it from both directions.
Yeah, the only thing I can say very honestly is, the sign is big enough to see from the road, I think, if you drive a truck, okay, that's number one. Number two, since we don't have anything saying it's approved, we're assuming that it's not approved, okay. Well, why can't we say something like, for this particular, like this sign, it should be addressed individually per project? And if there's no real objection to that, we have been working, for example, on this case, for a certain period of time, do we wanna go back and change that, or, you know?
Well, it does specify something in there about, you know, directional signs, and also covers building signs. Building signs have to be on a, on the building or on the monument of some sort. So what this was here was not a directional sign originally. There's nothing on here that says entrance or a truck entrance or anything like that, it's just identical to the business sign that was on the front of the building. So that, that's not considered, now, this is a directional sign, because it actually says that, and you would have rules and stuff in the books on directional signs as far as being mounted on a post.
No, just the opposite. Directional signs are not in the code, period. It's, it's the other signs that are in the code.
Yep.
Directional signs, as he said, anything not in there is possibly prohibited, but that's kind of.
I think we see the mounting, it's not covered in the code. Mounting it on a fence is the part that's not covered in the code.
Mr. Chairman, if I can?
Yeah.
And that's correct, the mounting of the, the sign on the fence is not specifically mentioned in the code, but this is considered an instructional sign, and I guess you could, you could really look at it maybe one of, one of two ways, instructional or directional. But an instructional sign means a sign intended to instruct employees, customers, or users as to a specific parking requirement, the location or regulations pertaining to specific activities on site in the building, specific services offered, methods of payment. So I think it probably falls under the instructional sign, which gives, which gives some latitude to the building commissioner in terms of allowing them, but it's, the size of the sign has to be sort of justified to the, the distance off of the, off of the property, and the size of the lot, the size of the building. I do think that this sign could probably be smaller, and mounted in such a way that it's not on a fence, but still able to be seen from the road. And actually, we were just talking about the, how traffic comes into this property, has to come into the entrance where it's shown, and some of the line of sight is blocked by the front face of the building. So the sign really would do better out closer to the, to the road right of way. Can't go into the road right of way, has to be set back, all pole or ground line signs have to be set back at least five feet of the height of the sign. So there would have to be an appropriate setback off the right of way, but I think that would be probably the best location for it. And then I think done, you know, tastefully, because the signage that's on there is a nice block sign, and so you'd wanna have that one sort of mirror a little bit, you know, taste on entrance sign.
All the, all the truck traffic comes in from Alexander, because North Freeway is bound by Ledger Road, and no traffic can come that way.
Yeah.
So I guess in, in benefit of the truck drivers, it would be difficult for them to find that as an entrance until probably halfway past the building.
Yeah, if I might add, I just give up the historical approach to this a little bit, is that directional signs were always a part of a package, which you, anytime a building came in, their monument sign would be one, their sign on the building would be another, and most directional signs were for exits, entry, deliveries, what have you, but they were obviously small in character, and just something to give somebody direction to get to the property. And obviously, once you get in, they can have them on their doors and stuff like that to get them into the building that they're after. I think we unfortunately have fallen way far from where we used to be with our signs, and that's something that I'm going to be working on to bringing it back to where, where we're supposed to be, and I'm gonna be calling on contracts that we have in place on many buildings in the city, where we have set the template, set the color, set the size, and where this planning commission doesn't really need to have anything to do with it once the templates have been set. It could be an administrative move. And I think Frank, back in the day, once we had set those templates, then the building department can issue based on those templates and those setting of those templates, and not bother this planning commission to have to deal with it.
I guess, anyway, I guess we got a couple things. The first, the first sign, the main monument sign, I think, anybody have any problem with that?
No.
It's this sign, so I, I think, since there's not really a provision to have it on the fence, I think probably all kind of agreed it should probably moved off somehow. What is the best place and location for it, and does it need to be a four by six sign? I don't, I don't have a problem with maybe having some kind of logo and things like that on here. And if four by six isn't huge, I mean, it's, it's a good size sign, but.
When it gets outside, it'll look like a two by four sign, probably, if that.
I'm wondering, is, is interior supply, are they in this place, do you know?
Are they there?
Are they operating? I'm sure they would like to get something changed, at least on that monument sign. I don't know if we, you know, approve at least that part of it, see if they wanna come back, and if they would like to propose something, something different, something separately mounted.
Can we just approve a ground sign? Because I don't really think they wanna come back.
Okay, I mean, we could probably.
So they could come to me. So, Kevin, you could go ahead, you could go ahead and approve the, the original sign. As far as the directional signs, they could submit those directly to me, and I won't have to come back to the planning commission.
Why don't we do that?
Okay.
We'll prove them both, based on the fact that it's gonna be a ground sign rather than a fence.
The sign here that's, that's on the fence, we don't, no one recalls this, it's probably not even allowed, they probably, they probably would put that in themselves. So just to replace it is not as simple, just do it. Yeah, we're not just gonna let anybody do anything. I don't know if that's, so, okay, so, do we think, I don't know, we don't want approval of the package, I think we wanna approve the main monument.
Well, conditional, conditional.
Well, I don't know if it's even conditional, if we just don't approve this and let them bring it back to the building department, and I think, from your standpoint, Mike, maybe it's, you gotta find the right location.
Right.
And.
And the right size. And it's the right size, because no one's really said that.
That's, that's, you know, I, you know, I don't wanna say that you can't even put your logo on it or something like that, I mean, you could put receiving entrance, and that's all you need, but I could see something.
Particularly, I think they're more like a three by three, whole monument sign, full signed.
Might go for a four by four there.
Well, we shouldn't say that, maybe the building, they're working out with them.
But maybe something more in that ballpark, just downsize it a little bit, get it closer to the, out to the rows, if they can see it.
Yeah, if this could be out farther by the road, then that's fine. Yeah.
Still have room here for the.
Still comfortable with that?
As long as it's outside the right of way, I think you'll be able to say.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we, we, we approve the request for the monument sign as is, and will defer the decision on the informational sign to the building department for approval.
Well, we still have to, can we do that, and we still have to, we still have to approve it, right?
You have to approve the sign, not the directional sign.
Now, the directional sign, we defer that to the building department.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next one, proposed sign installation for Hallmark, eighty-two ten, three way challenge.
You got some stuff on there, information, different, yeah, here. But it may not be necessary to.
Yeah, for sure. Additional copies. Now, do you have the, the stuff that was sitting here with our minutes, is that different than we had before?
They've reached, they sent an additional copy later today, so I think it's the same that just put the address down.
We actually.
Yeah.
This is.
That's what was originally submitted, and.
Okay, so these things are.
So then we went back to make the revision.
Oh, okay, okay, so you're already on top of the comments.
Okay.
That's what the difference is. All right, you wanna just talk briefly about this, and then we've got some comments now?
Sure.
The proposal right now is a set of thirty-six inches, thirty-six inch raceway mounted channel letters, basically, black white style, black during the day, white in the evening, and then below that, the gold crown is black cut out acrylic letters, which are not so big.
Okay, so this, this is, this is the air, black is what you want.
This is what we would prefer, of like.
This is.
We're willing to meet the criteria.
Okay, okay. All right. Is that, is that, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I do wanna note that I'd asked Janelle to provide you with a, a report I had done back in two thousand and fourteen, June of two thousand and fourteen, regarding some amendments that were proposed to the Mastonia Commons sign plan. And for the new members, just so they may or may not be aware, the, the Planning and Zoning Code allows for a sign plan for retail complex to be brought forth to the city and approved by the, by the planning commission, working through the mayor's office. And we have a number of those sign plans in place. Mastonia Commons, back in nineteen ninety-four, Mayor Miglerini had worked to come to an agreement with the developer and put forth and approved by the planning commission a sign plan. And back in two thousand and fourteen, developers diversified, had brought a, an amendment to that sign plan, the, and that's the report that Janelle has provided you with this evening in addition to my current report. And that, that amendment allowed on the miscellaneous retail stores to go from thirty to thirty-six inches for the letter, letter height or maximum sign height, but it also allowed tenants to choose their own sign colors with the provision that they would have to come and get approval from the planning commission for colors outside of what's allowed under the sign, the approved sign plan. And in this case, the, the ninety-four approved plan and everything that's pretty much gone in the commons, I think, on miscellaneous signs, have had the, the sign faces are red, which is required, and the raceway color is white to match the background. The applicant's proposing something different this evening with the, the black and white, the black and white signage, so that is something that would have to be approved by the planning commission. So my comments regarding the, the Hallmark sign as it stands, the, the sign itself, in terms of the square footage, is just a little under thirty-seven square feet, which is, which is fine under the, under the sign code, they're allowed, I think they're allowed upwards of, it's close to sixty square feet, so they're well within that required amount that they're permitted to have in terms of sign area. The script style lettering that's being proposed would also require planning commission approval pursuant to that two thousand and fourteen amendment. The only, what really is a very minor amendment is the letter can needs to be five inches deep, and I think we shared that with the applicant prior to the meeting, and it's a very simple fix, I think they're showing four inches and it needs to be five. So that can be a very simple change, and the commission can, can, can look at that if the applicant agrees to do that. And then the window signage itself does meet the area requirements found in section eleven seventy-nine oh seven F four, so I think that that, that could be approved if the commission concurs. So really, the issues are the script style lettering needs to be addressed, the color issue needs to be addressed by the commission, and then if the applicant agrees, the revise that letter can needs to be five inches deep. I can answer any questions if the commission can.
Were you dropping the idea of something red up there, red, you don't need that red anymore?
Well, I think the applicant can best address that, but the, the commission, under that, that two thousand and fourteen approval, the commission has to approve something other than the red, which is the standard for miscellaneous stores.
Well, I guess the other thing, maybe a question there, it looks like, as I recall, Hallmark's logo is in script rather than anything else, so that's their normal logo, that probably, rather important.
Yes, yes.
Is, is, and I saw you added some gold to the new, the new idea, the first one was just straight up.
This is the new one.
Oh, the new one.
Red.
Does, does red bother you, or is it a problem?
If we're forced to meet the sign criteria, which is the red color scheme, we don't have a problem with that, but we would prefer it originally submitted, which was the black and white style.
Oh, this one or not?
Correct, yes.
That's some gold, a gold trim on it.
Exactly, yes.
Is that sort of in keeping with your national logo?
Yes.
More so than the red would.
It is.
So are we asking for a variance here, or just approval?
I think we just have to approve if we wanna do a different color. It looks like you get the can part, that's all. I prefer the red myself, I like the standard that's in there, but I know it's already up to the sign, and there with the black, so.
Which one was that?
I was trying to think, it's a relatively new one.
At the knitting shop?
No.
Are they red?
That was, that was somewhere else.
That was in the commons.
Yeah, that's where it is, right in the corner there in Valley View.
Yeah, this is a.
Oh, no, oh, this is different.
The big common.
Oh, yeah, all the commons.
And all that, with everything in there, it's been red. And it's my preference, if they, obviously, they've given you a go ahead on the red, if we have to, and as long as they're, they're willing to do that, then I think that would be my, my choice.
I don't have any comments. I think yes, I find it acceptable.
I find the ones that they want acceptable, too, we ought to help merchants if we can, that's sort of their national logo. I, I don't, I don't recall seeing a Hallmark store with a red, but, you know, I'm not strong on either one.
May I hear what you want to add?
Well, the, the only thing that I wanna say is, is that, again, the historical approach to Mastonia Commons, when we first put it in, there was an agreement between the city of Mastonia, the developer. What we didn't wanna have is a proliferation of signs in all different looks. We wanted to have something that was very sedated and looks nice from the street. In fact, the signs were to be of all the same type of letters, we weren't allowing for logos on the signs, it was straight letters. In fact, I can remember one of the companies that was there who had, it was the shoes, shoeless store, shoeless shoes.
Payless.
Payless shoes or something. They came in and they had a yellow sign that they wanted to put up, and we went back and forth, back and forth, and finally, they put up a red sign, even though the yellow was their color.
Let me see that red one.
I know that a lot of companies like to keep their identity, but on the other side of it is, is that.
I guess it's not so bad.
The proliferation of signs and the way they look, and it, it gets away from you. And that's why we wanted to set a template there in the commons, so that it all looked nice and carried on a particular look for our city. We've gotten away from that, I think we need to get back to where we were, and I'm pushing along those lines to bring us back to that compliance. Brian, I wasn't sure whether or not you said there was an amendment, was it an agreement between us and the, and the developers diversified?
Yeah, it was, back in two thousand, June of two thousand and fourteen, and Mayor, I have a extra copy for you, I can give you afterwards, but, yeah, the, the planning commission, at request by developers, had entertained this amendment, and the, the main things were changing on the major retailers, the sign height from sixty to seventy-two inches, on the miscellaneous thirty to thirty-six, and then the biggest, what I thought the most significant was the color. And the, the planning commission did approve it to allow applicants to come in and, and have a different color, but subject to approval by the planning commission.
But it, did it deal with the type of letters?
It did, it allowed for, in this case, the script could be something that would be approved, that the commission would have to approve.
It's kinda hard to argue when. It's kind of hard to argue when, when a planning commission and authority made a decision that's, that, you know, even though there was an agreement in place. So I can't argue at this point about the script versus the standard Esbro type of letter that was on there, I believe, for just about all the signs. So it's something, though, that unfortunately, we have allowed our city to get away from. I think when you have a multi-tenant building, you got to kind of try to hold to some basic standard. I'm okay if all the signs are of the same height, as long as they're not, you know, taken away from the front of the shopping center and making us look bad. I think there was nothing in there about putting logos in or additional script in there as it related to their identification. I mean, if it's Hallmark, then it's Hallmark, period, not Crown Gold or anything like that.
Yeah, I think the, well, first, the script style is, it was specifically prohibited in the, the original plan. And they've since altered, altered that as a potential. But a single non-letter logo consistent with the criteria was allowed in the ninety-four plan. I don't remember if, if that was addressed in the application by Developers Diversified. I think we should look at that and see if they did even request that.
I, I think what we need to do is match up what our agreement is with them that was put in place and what we currently have in place. And I had, and I'm sorry for not having that done, what we should have had that done before, if this people perhaps.
Could we consider a compromise that will go along with the, the script, because that's their national logo, I think? And maybe leave it red if your client can stand that.
Yeah, that's fine. We went back on Friday.
That might be a compromise, that might be a little compromise we're doing instead of approving.
I, I knew that there would be a possible objection to the original submitted. So we did go back and request the alternative. And we did receive approval from developers, which is my problem with me. So I would go with the assumption that we really have to go with the, the red color scheme to match the criteria, which is fine with, with me and my client.
Doing this, keeping it script, which is set upon. The definite. You in favor of that?
I'm a favorer of that.
So we're, the motion would be to then to accept the second submitted.
Set your motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks a lot. I appreciate it.
All right. Most signs for some point, ninety-six thirty in Valley View. Do you need copies of? Um. You know, Jean Gatten. Maybe she.
Hi, good evening. How are you? I have two copies here. The difference from the last time I was here and I was partially approved is that there was not an address. We were within zoning regulations. However, you did not like us covering up the red with this branding element because there's etched underneath. So my client, and I'm just going to speak on behalf of my client, they, they believe they've invested a lot in the city upwards to, just significant, to purchase this facility. And they would like to kindly ask that they not put another sign like this, which they're willing to compromise, but prefer not to dirty up their grass or their lawn because it is a facility for retirement. So they really want to keep the property pretty, not overfilled. This is the way they're branding it in all of their other facilities. But they do respect, you know, the, the board's decision. But they would like me to, to argue their point on their behalf that they've invested in the city and that they would like me to support their investment by keeping the property pretty. Yes. With this, the, the address. So this is the change that I made from the initial.
That wasn't our only.
Well, they really don't want me to show you this until we have this conversation. And then this is, this would be our second copy. They really don't want to put more coal in the ground. They, they want to keep the land pretty. Because who wouldn't want to retire here in this beautiful area? So they really want their property. They invest a lot in taking care of like the land and the yard and all of that.
I forget. Were you, were you guys here?
No, you were just.
Okay, that was, that was the last meeting before you. Do you happen to have, or we don't happen to have the, before, the current?
He has.
You got a picture, please? So this is. Okay. Yeah, you guys have it next one. So this is the current, the current thing. Have you seen this?
And the client loves it, you know, but it would be like.
This is the current sign?
It makes them come.
Okay.
They want a bigger one.
Well, they want to just put a metal sheet over it, a fiberized sheet over all that engraved sandstone.
To protect it?
No.
No.
They want their new.
Instead of.
Excuse me, but these are new members.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is all engraved in sandstone, cut in and filled. They want to take it, put it in fiberized.
Oh, and make it blue also?
Well, our, our suggestion, last time they were here, was just to put the top piece in.
Sort of the capital branding.
Right across the top then and leave this, which is part of, this is a residential area.
Yeah.
All our residential areas have these carved monuments going into them. And it is.
Doesn't match their logo or whatever.
Well, it says identically the same thing. It's just that it does have a little background. But this week consent, consented to put in blue.
Oh, you did?
Put, like, cut this rail across this white line, put that right in here.
Oh.
And leave this.
Would they like the whole thing in blue?
No, they want the.
I, I follow you. I see the whole.
What was the objection to this?
Um, well, we, we had hit all zoning, we had hit all zoning regulations, but it was a personal, it was just personal that you didn't want to cover, that you, being the board, thought that it was so historic and so beautiful that it would be best not, it was a personal opinion.
To cut, to cover the brick you're talking about?
That you, you, however, you did also state that you didn't want the, our other drawing didn't have the address. So we made that correction and we put the address on it. Yeah.
This is what's here now.
Yeah, that's what's here now.
They came in with essentially this about the address.
Oh, okay. All right, all right.
And.
So we'd like to politely ask that this get approved. And if not, I have, I have another option. But my client has paid more money for me to come for the second time. And we would just really like you to do this for them. They do care about the property, like, they're going to take care of this land and would prefer not having another one of these in the ground to accommodate, you know. So it's, you know, what's, you pay here with that same, pay here, pay here. So.
Kind of, yeah.
I do. Well, we're, we're. Monuments, I, I mean, before the season goes into its phase two, what she's talking about there is even approvable? I mean, it can't have two.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know the, I don't know how much frontage the property has. I mean, there's a lot of unknowns that I think we have to really take a look at that. But, you know, with all due respect, it's not just someone's personal taste. In this case, this property is right smack dab in the center of the town center district. And.
Highly historical.
Well, it, it's designed in a Western Reserve architecture.
Right.
Right? And, and that's what chapter eleven seventy-two of our code.
And I didn't mean to be disrespectful. I haven't, I own a century home. So you are talking to someone who loves beautiful, beautiful things. So.
But, and I, and I don't mean it from the standpoint that you're being snide or sarcastic. I'm, I'm saying it's not just personal taste on, on behalf of the city. It's, it's actually documented in this, in the code, eleven seventy-two oh three, which are town center standards. And this property falls right in the center of the town center. And it requires certain materials. And sandstone was one of them. Now, I will also say, take this with a grain of salt, it's not impossible to do work with existing sandstone. I worked on a project in, in downtown Painesville in a, in a, you know, an eighteen oh five historic district. And sandstone was the application. It was a sign. And a bank sold out to another bank. And they wanted to put up something, you know, similar where they just cover it. And, and we said, no, you, you can't do that. This is, there's design criteria. And so they were able to go to a sandstone quarry and put up the pieces and parts of the sign to, to put that new sandstone face on. Now, how much that costs, and, and I, and I perfectly respect what you're saying about the client's investment in the community. But at the same time, it's not impossible. Everything's possible, depending on how much money it takes to make it possible. I don't know what that answer is, so.
Well, and we did explore that. And it was too expensive for them. And that is why we then brought, you know, the, the only other option.
Yeah, that, that may or may not be an option. Again, I don't know what that, what that is. But again, I will tell you, this falls within the town center district and architecture is regulated. And so that, just from, without my glasses, doesn't look like anything that would be approved by the city in the town center district.
Right.
Okay. So this also would not be approved?
Just from first glance at it, I don't believe that that would be approved by the, by the city.
So they, what you're saying is, and if you could clearly communicate that to me, because they will not be happy that we would then have to come a third time.
Right. And I understand it. And I'm not telling, I'm just telling you what the code says. It's the commission's discretion and decision on how this gets approved. I'm just, as their consultant, letting you know that there is a, there's regulations in the code that, that specifically speak to architecture in the town center district. This property is right in the middle of that.
Okay. If we could just, you know, figure out for sure so that we can resolve this on behalf of my.
Can I ask a question? What, what does the, your company want, though? They, they want, is their, their regular, is blue important to them?
Yes. And there's, there's a sign, this was partially approved because there's a small plaque sign that's as you enter into the building. But this was not approved. So.
But, but the, the sandstone is still there, right?
Yes.
And, and they don't like that at all? They don't like any part of that sandstone? They can't abide it?
Well, we looked into the cost associated and they, they are not minimally.
What's the cost associated with doing what?
I don't have the.
What, what do they want to do, though? Put the word Capital somewhere on there?
Again, and we did say.
I understand the question that.
And they, again, we did say that we would allow this portion of the.
But, but I'm getting confused. What do they want to do?
Once we, once we sized it in this tri, it was so small that the logo was so small that we were not able to do that.
Let me finish my, let me finish my question.
This, this here, just about the top of the sandstone, it would be the same proportion.
It, we did size it. We had my designer do it. Because of this lip, can I borrow your?
Sure.
Because of this lip and it's three dimensional, it really becomes smaller because it's a three dimensional space. Where this is a flat face. So actually, it does become very small. Once, once we did a graphic design to size that, because this is dimensional and you can't be right there and you can't be right there. It, it, it does become an issue of scalability, but it became scaled too small in this triangular.
Could I, could I finish my question? My question is, when you, when someone, point first came in there, this was a different entity that owned it? Is that what we're saying? And this is a new entity called Capital? Is that, is that your, is that a yes answer? That's yes.
It's been purchased.
By Capital. And they want to get their name somehow on this entity. Is that right?
We've been actually doing quite a few properties for a month.
And it's always, your signs are always blue and the word Capital somewhere on there. And that's the problem here with.
It's a branding.
And, and do you ever put these nursing homes in historic towns like any town?
Well.
What do you do about that?
I'm new to the company. So I've been with the company for about three months. I, I've only done two other properties with them beside these properties. But they're all, it, it's branded and this is their branding.
And if, and if Capital sells out, we, we, we probably meet some other person like you, having to change the old sign again, right?
Well, the good thing is that we could put some sort of a language in there, that if it were ever to sell, that this one wouldn't have been damaged. You know, like, I'm sure they could remove this and it could, I don't know. I mean, whatever you decide, you know, I don't.
Would, would they sell out if they didn't get their sign up? Is that a, a deal breaker or something?
I think they're very proud that they're in the area. And, and they, they did mention that they like to take care of the land and the property and they want it to look pretty. So their investment was mentioned. And they asked me actually not to show this, but, you know.
Yeah. I think the part that, that, at least, at least for Frank and I, that, that, from the last time you were in, that they don't like is probably the biggest part that they want, is, is the big blue. You know, and, and I think.
And you don't think it has a regal Western Reserve look to it? Because, I mean, I think the, the classicness of the blue and the, I mean, I still think it has a, of a historical richness and nature to it.
That's one question. This, I'm going to play it to you better. I like fulfilling community. That's the product of the previous movement?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay. So they did that in what they're saying, stone. Was it done in such a way that this could be taken off easily or removed or something? Or was it built in? Has anybody know?
I think the, there's probably, probably a chunk that's built into the thing. I'm sure it could be removed, but I don't know if that's, you guys were, I assume you're just putting this over the top.
And even if they were to spend the money to do it, it wouldn't be their brand. So, A, they wouldn't want to spend the money. B, it wouldn't, they, they would keep it as it is. And then would have to instill their brands in another manner.
I don't know if they know that.
I, I, I'm trying to come up with a compromise. Like, because we can't fit it here, could we put something like a square, sort of like a blue something here instead? That would at least, I mean, could we come, if you deny us this, could we come up with, here's our compromise. You can put a blue logo here with their logo.
And Diversified did.
Or.
Change the logo on the side.
B, we will allow you to have a post with that, which this sounds like this isn't, this is absolute, we don't, this is goodbye.
Well, it's, it's not goodbye. It's not great to work the way it's drawn. So, that's not something that.
I think the, the post signs in the area, I mean, there's all kinds of stuff right around it.
That's a two-sided sign. Just so everybody.
Okay.
This is, I mean, it's.
No, the, the monument sign is two-sided.
Okay, yeah. I think, we're just not even allowing post signs down Highland Road. Now, I mean, that could be, I'd say it's something, I don't know. Would even a second, if they consider a monument sign, right, Brian? Like, the way it would have to be done, make it into a monument sign. And you're talking foundation, all this stuff. And I don't know if you could have this plus another one.
I mean, and they would prefer not, they, they really, we, they like their property. They like the grass. It, it's a part of the system, I mean, like, the exterior of property being pretty. So what, what would you approve? That's, that's triangle on the top would scale too small. That's, that's triangle on the top would scale too small.
Would it have to be blue with it?
Instead of just being plain, like to bring like this stripe here around the edge to give it a little, to give it the same edge of, you know, move like that.
You mean in white?
Yeah, like this line that you have here, have it outlined.
Or white, so it has a crispness to it?
And put that white in towards the building side of it.
Not here, but we're more discreet.
Yeah, that's the same side, same side, so I think that would be, that way you're still seeing, I don't know, what do you think of something?
I think that could work, if you had the capital.
You're allowed the blue up here, so what would be different?
Put it in the rectangular sign, then on the pillar part in the house to...
So that it looks like a little bridge like this has around it?
Yeah.
So that it looks like it's part of the sign rather than something, something blue on it?
Let me ask Mr. Franz a question. In the historic, your historic district, I'm used to that, it's kind of Hudson Lingo where I grew up. They, would you allow a two-color sign? There'd be the sandstone here. I haven't read that code section, eleven fifty-three, those sections. It seems like kind of an odd, oddball configuration if we allow a piece of blue over the sandstone. Is there anything on that color?
There, I mean, there isn't. It specifically talks about the types of materials allowed and the types of materials not allowed. You, I don't know if you have that original, the original proposal, if you had that, but you'll note on the bottom of that original proposal, there's some notes and it actually has my name on there. And I advised, I forget who, who it was I spoke to that, look...
It was, yeah, there was an individual that came prior to, yes.
Yeah, and I just, I had advised him that, you know, foam signs would likely not be approved in the town center district, that usually the standard is, you know, masonry, brick, fieldstone, so I, you know...
Is there a color, is there a color code, though? A color code like, like we were talking about?
There is not.
Nothing, you could have any color you want in these, in the historic, in your historic...
Well, the brick has to match the brick.
Yeah, you'd think so.
It does, it does have to match the brick.
I think that'd be very strange to put a triangle up on, a blue one.
This is a finely printed metal. This is not foam, this is a finely, I don't have my glasses on, I'm sorry, but the material is aluminum. Now, if we were to do a, if, if we were to do a drawing with a small right here and I sent this in to you, would the board then approve it and I wouldn't have to come back? Like if I, we fixed it, remedied it and sent it to you, could you approve it with the art file as instructive?
Area-wise, we're not in any problem ground.
No, I think that they have plenty of area to work with.
Plenty of area. I mean, I think last time we talked about do, you know, we would, if you came back and you put something in there, we'd be okay with it. So I, I don't know that I would at least have a problem with this, you know, some blue, just not taking over the whole thing.
And I like it not being by the street, but being as you over here. I think it's understated and...
There is an air filled raise here, so this, you can see it here, that this, this portion is raised out a little bit. So you can leave a little bit of the brick showing.
You want some air, you want some air, just okay.
I guess I can live with that.
Just got to clarify, that's okay. I understand you're going to put a little square sign, you're fucking up on here.
Yes.
What's going to happen here?
Nothing.
Nothing, that's going to stay like that?
Yes.
And this, this terminology here is going to stay then?
Yes, which is actually quite lovely, you know, because I think you're town center, right? I mean, that language, a life fulfilling community. A life fulfilling community.
As long as they would be okay with that part.
Yeah.
Thankfully the name, the actual name didn't change.
Frank, Frank, could you show me what they're planning? I, I'm, it's a little square blue sign to the right, is that, is that what it is?
Yeah.
A little thing right here?
You can see that this is raised, it's not the same level.
They want on that side?
Yeah, I think away from the street would be less intrusive. And leave a little bit of the brick showing.
They'd be fine with it because they...
So a little blue sign? A little tiny blue. Nothing, nothing up top, only this little thing.
With just capital in it, this part, this thing here.
Mr. Chair?
Nothing on this side.
Just as a point of clarification, we are not telling the...
Closer to the building?
What they can or can't say on your sign.
I know.
They can say whatever they want, they could say, Mr. Franz is an idiot. I wouldn't want you to say that, but you could if you wanted.
A little square sign.
Telling you what you can say on your sign.
Okay.
I don't know.
Duly noted, but I'm only saying that because I've never been, you know, the funny thing is they just recruited me in and this has been my first, my only permitting experience. So it's been a really good experience, you know, I've learned a lot, so... But would I be able to send it to you, to send the art file to you and you could get me, I probably shouldn't look at it, but I talk to you all the time. Would I be able to send you the art file and you could, that the board could then approve it based on the modifications?
If you could, we all agree, we could, we could make it, yeah, approve it with administrative review, let, let these guys see it and as if, you guys see it and it looks like what you think we're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
If, as long as, you know, as long as we agree with that.
My two little boys would appreciate it. Because I don't know what they're, maybe Popeye's tonight, so, okay.
Cooked or uncooked.
You know, I may get home made, but with the sweet mom, they're in front of Popeye's.
Are you guys are okay with this?
Yeah, I'll go with that.
I think a little bit better than the triangle.
As long as, yeah, as long as you think you need a little more signed area. I mean, I understand you have to put that, you'd be limited to that.
Yeah.
Or here, we might be able to squeeze them a little bit more. Are you going to make a...
Go ahead, Frank.
I'll pause a second.
Okay, the motion would be to approve a sign on the lower rear portion, the building side of the sign, on both sides, leaving a brick border where the company logo.
Okay.
I'll second.
And you have a street?
No, street.
Something commensurate. Does that sound African or something?
Thank you.
And it's going to be on the, the pier that's furthest from the street, is that right?
Yes.
Right, the building side of it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, John, I'm appreciative. And I will get that file to you. Okay, I'll take it.
Scrub it all over your picture.
The question, how do we think?
Hallmark, we don't... Yeah, please. And then what do you guys want to do? Do you want to look at Maurice's, talk about it briefly on the...
Yeah, maybe we can, maybe we don't need them.
No show, no...
Let's, let's at least talk about it for a minute, see. Ryan, you want to tell us what your thoughts were on there?
Sure, hang on just one second.
Just put it away.
Let me, uh... Let me find it.
Because there's, there's a lot that we need. Yeah, there's Maurice's, I mean, this, oh, pull up here.
Yeah.
They want to put it there in one of the new spots, or places.
That's not Maurice's.
Something.
No, I want you to say it.
It's something there.
Yeah, so...
I don't have to know what it is, I just want you to say it.
Right, right, right. Square footage-wise, the sign is fine. The issue is going to come into what we talked a little bit with Hallmark, but actually more pronounced because they're, they're requesting a turquoise colored sign. And again, it's supposed to be red and we can approve other colors, but I don't think we've ever approved anything sort of that, that far out there, if you will, from the red that we normally approve. Not, we haven't been, we haven't really entertained a lot of signs since we had that amendment in mid-two thousand and fourteen. The other little minor issues, the, the raceway color has to be white to match the background with bronze side returns. They're showing black side returns and no raceway identified at all. And they need a raceway. I point out number two, the sign has to project twelve inches from the building. The raceway has to be seven inches deep, so they're just not showing a raceway. So that's an amendment that has to approve to their plan. They need to, to do that. But the biggest is really the color issue. And the only thing I had pointed out is that, you know, did just a little bit of research online about this, about this particular business, and I have, you know, sort of documented in several examples where they've done turquoise, but also they've done blue, they've done white, I think they've done red as well. So I think there's some room to work with these guys. I don't, I don't know how pointed they're going to be on this topic. I'm kind of surprised they didn't come here this evening. Typically, the commission does not approve or deny or take action on other than a table when an applicant doesn't show to a meeting.
What did they say about the turquoise? Why is it, why was that important to them at all?
I don't know. I, I don't know, I mean, it just, this was just their, their application. They didn't give any specifics about it. I guess what I'm, I'm saying is I don't, I don't know if it's always consistent with their logo, logo application. And I found examples of red, white, and blue in their logo. So, you know, if we had someone here this evening, they may say, no problem, we'll switch to red and move on. I just, I don't know the answer to that.
Probably on a table this then.
Yeah, I think we will. Briefly, though, I mean, yeah, I think, I think that color could be...
Because you're designing a building.
Well, they might not be fixed in stone like Hallmark wasn't either. They're, they're fine, you know, what do we care?
Yeah, I did look at their website and they got one turquoise.
Yeah, twenty-seven inches?
Yeah, and they want, you know, they want to, they want to, they want to sign it, they support that. We don't care about the regular color in that, but...
They're still in the demo stage of renovations for that.
Okay, so they're, they still got a little bit of time?
Yeah, they sprinkle their work demos, so...
Well, did they already get the comments? Were they sent to them?
They didn't call me back or even want me back or anything.
Okay. Well, it'd be good to let them have that so that they, if they come in next time, they can be ready for, to fight for their color or be ready to change it.
Okay.
Okay, so...
I also noticed, it looks like they'll need, that's not standard block lettering. So we would have to approve...
I guess, how does, how does the code read? I know, I mean, at one point they were trying to go with all the same letters. Then we started kind of letting guys come, I mean, okay, it's a block letter, if it's nothing, if it's not script, I mean, there's some store that's, they're using their fonts, you know, and then Hallmark is, just, you know, falls under the script because it's not...
I feel more lenient by that to go all of that if we can maintain...
I think at the time they went with, if the font and the style letter was their logo, so to speak, then they could do it.
Right.
You know.
Sounds like it's not what the mayor would like.
No.
And not doing what he likes, so...
Yeah, the, the current plan specifically says block only, script prohibited. That, that's what it read up until June. And I think we addressed that in the amendment that said script is possible with permission approved. Yeah, if it's part of their logo. So, you know, the issue then becomes, how do we deny it?
Yeah, if they're a national chain, they, they invested tons of money in, in whatever their logo is, so it's kind of tough to...
Well, we let...
He said, when you asked about the logo, he said, sort of. The gentleman from Hallmark, he didn't say, oh, this is...
You see Hallmark's all the sort of, they're usually all the same. I don't see anything different.
And we have in the past the actual logo.
We let subway and the logo to their sign because in their internal audit, he got dinged for that.
I've never heard of Maurice, though, so I don't know what that is.
It didn't meet corporate standards. I, I think that with all due respect, I think we, the city should invest an opinion from the legal department on telling them if they can, can or can't have a logo. I think we'd be infringing on some, some copyright laws and I think we'd be infringing on free speech as well, which we have to be, that's why I, I wasn't, with all due respect, I was just saying, she was making me a little nervous and very clear that we're not telling you what your sign can say. And I think a logo falls under that category as well. So I think you should be a little careful there. There's been a lot of changes in the, with court cases that impact this topic since Mayor McGlorian had addressed this in the sign plan. We just want to make sure we're okay. The economy was much different then than it was a few years back. It certainly has an impact on things, I would say.
I don't know, does maybe you have a opinion? What, if we wanted to request a legal opinion, what's, is that something we could ask you guys to relay to the mayor and have him request? Some kind of legal opinion on logos, signs, colors that we need to have? You know, I, I'm sure it probably needs to be brought by him to have, to ask for that, but I don't know. If he was still sitting here, I'd just ask him, but...
I think they're having a finance committee. Yeah.
I'm not going to...
Is the mic off?
If somebody, if somebody has the ability, they ask to mention that something, maybe we, you know, maybe for the next meeting we could have, is that something that could be done, like, you know, all right.
My analogy to all that, you ever seen McDonald's with rock sign in twenty-one? Two stories with chandeliers, that's not a cookie cutter McDonald's.
True.
One Hudson one.
Yeah.
They had to go through hell to get that building approved.
And, and we do have, we have a lot of latitude with regard to architecture. And I'm not saying that you don't and you don't have the ability to massage and make things look a certain way. And we do that, the architect. I, I'm just saying when it comes to saying you can't have a logo only your name, it starts to tread on some, some thin ice, so to speak, that we have to be careful with.
Well, sure, everybody over there is want to come back and change their signs.
How about McDonald's?
As long as they got to show that it's their logo.
Well, but it's all part of...
If you're messing with Walmart, their logo is not Walmart, their logo is...
Everything, everything McDonald's is yours.
Right, we approved, or the board approved, did sections of the commons that has, that raised height in front, that they can have bigger signs.
Right.
And they want those, why? Because you can see them, you can find them easy.
Walmart?
I think one, one of the comments was that, about McDonald's sign in the commons. And just so the commission is aware, and, and again, Janelle's going to pull this pack together for you of the, of the different retail plazas and their requirements, but we treat miscellaneous signs, that'd be the, sort of the strip plaza signs, if you will, differently than we treat, treat the major retailers. And we treat the sublots or outlots differently as well. So there's, there's some, there's a scheme, if you will, of things going on in commons that you guys, you know, you need to be aware of.
I think the only one that is that small strip next to the railroad tracks, there's no sign package where stuff and puff is in and... Right, right.
Is that Cipollini or?
Cipriani.
Cipriani? Yeah, we do have a sign package for that.
Do we?
Yeah.
Is that new?
No, it's, uh...
Relatively.
Two thousand and twelve, well, two thousand and twelve. I recognize that sloppy handwriting, that would be one Kayla Milani, Kayla Nealon's handwriting. So it looks like we approved the original, there is one for that plaza and it was...
Kind of loose, though.
What's that?
I think it's kind of loose, though, isn't it?
Yeah. I think it's more loose than our other ones, yes. Uh, two thousand and five, looks like...
Lots of dragon heads or whatever it is.
With the...
Yeah. Mr. Coles, you have something on the table that, before we get out, a motion to table.
Oh, yeah.
Is that a motion, that one? Second name one?
Yeah.
All right, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I talked a little bit with this before you came in with the, you know, there about this stuff. We have a lot of stuff that's on the tables list. And my question was, how long did it stay on there? When, you know, when do we take action, take a mop? And then I had asked others to put the dates to these things, so we know when they went originally tabled. And then a couple of the others, and Dennis was kind of clarifying some of it for me. They had their signs up already. And they were the signs that we turned down. Okay, and now we have them on table, so where, where do we go from here? What action do we take now?
So which ones, okay, maybe run through this real quick, patio, landscape, is that just recently?
Yeah.
Okay. Positional use permit for a hotel, that's, that's kind of, that'll, that'll make some kind of turn.
That's in the works, yeah.
By name, the Massanite Family Recreation Center? Yes, that's, that's some kind of turn, so... Phil's Auto Truck Center.
And that's one, he's already got a sign up.
Was his sign up, was it before he came in?
Well, he was, that was under a new occupancy and as part of, he moved in over there, that was part of an occupancy, and then also he had to go to do the process, go through the process for his sign approval, so. His sign was there, but, but he had already moved in.
Right, cause he moved in.
And they've, they've been to court and they're rectifying this stuff, you should see it at the next meeting.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
For Phil's, yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, cause he used to be over in the summer building on Valhalla, and he moved up there.
They just came in this, into last week.
Interior, exterior Wendy's, anybody know what they're?
I haven't heard a thing from that in probably a year.
So that's pretty old. And then, yeah, U-Haul Space Place.
Same thing, that was, that was denied. Never came back.
Yeah. And the science for auto correct. Has his sign up already also.
Well, that was another one that moved in and fell under an occupancy inspection and violations.
Okay, so, I mean, there's a couple that are pretty old, I don't know, is there, is there anything in Mexico, or is there any guidelines?
Yeah, I think it's, it just fall under Robert's rules, and so what I would suggest to the commission and fairness to the applicant, I don't mean to give you guys more work to do and you'll throw darts at me after this, but I would suggest that, that the staff reaches out to these particular property owners that we're unsure of what the status is, Dennis, sounds like most of these are still in the works, but the ones that there's a question mark, just reach out and say, at the next planning commission meeting on blank date, the commission intends to remove your item from the table and, and do X. If you're gonna, you know, just pass on the application because of lack of interest from the applicant, at least give them notice and they can either let the administration know, you know, don't, don't do that, we still wanna come back, or, yeah, go ahead, take it off and remove it from the agenda. But I think just taking it off yourself and not notifying them wouldn't really fall under Robert's rules.
Let me ask you something, Wendy's always struck my interest when we were talking about McDonald's, it's something to do with their signs, aren't their signs kind of uniform nationwide? What do they wanna do for the sign?
There was more than just this. Yeah, they're, they're redoing the whole, the inside was getting, really changing the outside, they wanted to change. I've never seen the, there's a new one, it's a big giant red. Changing the whole.
When they came.
Not, they're right in the middle of town center.
Okay. It has not to do with the sun, not necessarily.
Well, some of those.
Part of it, I think, cause then they had a giant.
Some of those on Highland Road, there was like a movement to get those into a monument signing room off the four by four post. So they, I think that every time there was something new or renovations that that was.
I'm talking about Wendy's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's in the town center, they could change, yeah, what they want to do is change the town center.
Well, I'll wait until they come back if they do come back.
Yeah, it's been a long time, and I don't think that they're.
It says right on the bottom of your agenda there, the table items were removed after one year of inactivity, the very bottom line.
Yeah, I guess you know.
Get given that, I don't think you need to do a whole lot.
We just check and see when they were here last.
And what happens, I guess, if they're taken off and they do come back, and what is, does that mean, does that mean they gotta pay another application?
Yeah.
If they're taking, if they're taking off the table thing, so I mean, it's still like, I mean, if we know, you know, five of these are definitely coming back, and there's only about two or three that are still up in the air, and it sounds like two of them are, they're probably just laying low. They don't might be on the table thing because their sign's sitting there.
Already up, wasn't the U-Haul thing just denied?
Didn't they resubmit it though?
Oh, did they?
Yeah, I think that that one's still out there and, and, you know.
We'll just have to check the date.
Kevin, I think six and one doesn't happen the other, I mean, for, for most of these, the city requires very little in terms of like an escrow amount.
Yeah.
That, and, and I charge kind of, you know, those orange peanuts that the, that they hand out, so for the little that does get charged to it, there's probably not left, much left on the escrows, in fact, they may have already closed the escrows on these things too. In finance.
And the other side of that is enforcement if they don't, if they've already got something up and they haven't done anything with it.
Yeah, I guess you may wanna check with Mike and see how he wants to proceed with the couple guys that are, you know, they're on the list because their sign's not compliant and it's already up. Maybe check with a couple of them and if it's, if you don't hear anything or whatever, then we can take it off, and then Mike can always decide how a building wants to pursue, do you have a sign, guys? Last, after I introduce.
This is Desiree, she's gonna be taking over for the planning commission meetings, being the secretary.
Starting.
Um, she's gonna be, me and her are gonna come together for the next couple of meetings and then she'll eventually take over.
All right.
Nice to meet you all.
Yeah. Sometimes the meetings are four minutes, sometimes they're forty-five, and there's been a, they gave a little like four hour. Not too often. All right. What's your move?
Ken Martin, like the last one here was working out.
All in favor?
I miss if there's a basketball.
Okay, there's something, yeah.